Brad, unless you've got one hiding behind that deer there, we don't have a flag, right?
No.
Alright, so we'll skip our pledge of allegiance.
It's 7:02.
We'll just feel it in our hearts.
Right.
So, the first order of business is to review our agenda and make changes as necessary. Tom, I'm sorry, we tried to put the agenda up so that you could see it, the public could see it, but we're having a technical challenge with that.
Oh, okay.
But, yeah, but, so does anybody have any changes to our agenda?
No.
No.
So I moved to adopt the agenda.
Wait a second, Brad, I do have one. Um, I have heard from our attorney and so he has suggested that because he's been giving us legal advice that we go into executive session to discuss the advice we're getting from the attorney, the counsel from the attorney. So I'd like to go into executive session at the end of the meeting.
Okay, for what purpose?
Uh, basically because it's to discuss legal advice from our attorney.
Sounds good to me.
Um, so the next order of business would be to review and approve our previous meeting minutes.
Okay, so we have to adopt the agenda, which I'm moving to do.
Thank you, Brad.
With the, um, with the executive session added to the end.
Great. All in favor?
Somebody second?
Aye.
Do we have a second? Yeah.
I'll second it.
So pause. Seconding and Brad made the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, and actually, we should do a roll call though, always because we're remote. Um, so Doug?
Yes.
Uh, Paul?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Steve, not here, right? Lynn is a yes as well, so, um, so all who were in attendance, in favor. So, review and approve the previous meeting minutes, those are the meeting minutes of April 9th. Um, and I did send those around to everybody as well. And everybody saw them, you know, back on the 13th when we first did them. Um, I'd love to hear a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion.
And you guys identify yourselves for Chris.
Oh, Paul, so move.
Second by Brad.
Great. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Oh.
Alright, so. We've got Doug, aye, Paul, you're an aye.
Aye.
Brad?
Aye.
Lynn's an aye, so we've got four ayes, is that correct?
That's right.
Great, okay, um.
I just got here.
Oh, Steve, are you there?
Yeah, I just figured this thing out.
Well, welcome. Are you on a computer or a phone?
Phone, because I gotta be able to look at the computer to see what we're talking about.
Fair enough, good, alright. Um, great, so all we've done so far is we've, um, accepted our agenda, we've added an executive session at the end, and, um, and we've approved our minutes of the previous meeting.
Okay.
Next up is our planning commission report, and Bob, you were gonna give us a little where things stand as far as the town plan goes, right?
There we go, the mute button got stuck. Um, yeah, well, I think you all heard, the governor gave us an extension of 90 days, and the plan expires in May. So, we've delayed the, what's left to do is the public hearing, with the go over the current draft. Um, right now, you know, we've canceled April, May, June is still on the docket. We'll see how things are by June, and, you know, at the end of the day, it'll probably be a June or July, um, public hearing. And then we'll make odds after that and get it to the select board for review after that. And I think you all also have to have a public hearing with that as well.
Correct.
So, I think we'll try for June. Uh, either do it virtual or things have lessened up, we can do it, you know, here, we're gonna do it here at our house on Main Street.
Okay.
Okay?
Great. Thank you. Um, next up is our road commissioners' report. Um, so we'll hand it over to you, Paul.
Alright, um, couple things, we've completed our sweeping of the streets, and then, of course, we got that done and it snowed that night, but at least we didn't have to put any sand back down again, but, um, that's why I don't like to do it too early, because we know what happened last Saturday, so. But anyways, it's done. Uh, most of the greetings done on the back roads. Uh, we patched, once Tommy's pit got running where we could put hotnecks in, we've got the majority of the bigger holes on the Brook Road, and a couple bad ones up on, um, by between Eddie Lewis's and High Bridge, and a couple more back on the Timoths Road, and Tommy, uh, is, uh, working in London Dairy area, and I guess we're hopefully next on the agenda to get the four corners, the Timoths Road done, all the way up to the break in the road up where Doug's by the Fisk Road, or where the next break is there, up by Doug's. And, oh, let's see here, oh, called the sheriff, we had some people that there was an accident on the Raymond Road, uh, just below the intersection of Staples Road, and the people were complaining about the speed, as usual, on the back roads, so I did contact, uh, the sheriffs to Pirate Mount, and Day Fox said as soon as they get the speed card out, they'll see what their workload is, and we're gonna do the speed cart on, uh, Raymond Road and Staples Road. And, let's see. Oh, um, this just came up here within the last week, is I've been doing some research, and we're gonna replace the time clock in the town garage, the thing is ancient. I don't know, I think it was, I don't know how many years it's been there, but it's bad. Getting so the times don't correct themselves, and when it gets off, nobody knows how to reset it. So I've been checking into the ones at Staples is, I'm not going into any more stores than I have to, but I've been checking them online. And I've found a couple that look like they're, will work for us, but I, um, I can't find out if they're, they have a battery backup, these things will change with the, all the seasons when it change from daylight savings, they automatically change, and then I'm gonna let Dougie look at the time cards themselves and see if that's gonna be readable, you know, for him, I don't wanna get a time card that's too complicated. Um, so, like I said, once this virus thing has really, um, slowed things down as far as getting stuff done like that, but, um, hopefully we'll have something here in the next couple weeks where we can replace that, and then we, that'll help out there.
Yeah, because as I understand, Paul, am I right? Problem with our clock is, is that it doesn't keep up with daylight savings times, and the time gets off and it can't be reset.
Well, their clock now, when Dougie gets it, it's 5:45.
Yeah.
That they're checking in. And that, that's the other problem, that's not a problem, but that's the other issue that I've got to, uh, find out how far back this went, where they're checking in instead of at 7, they're checking in at a quarter to 7, and then getting out a little bit early on Fridays, which I don't have a problem with, um, you know, holiday weekends or something like that, but, um, I don't think it's gonna work, you know, our schedule work hours is 7 to 4, and we're already doing the 3:30 because they're working through their lunch hour. So, I'd rather get this back on 7 to 4, or 7 to 3:30, like they're doing it now, and, and like I said, if they, there is a weekend coming up, like Memorial Day or 4th of July, uh, and they do have plans for the weekend, wanna scoot out an hour or two early and make up for it, uh, by coming in a little bit early that week, I really don't have a problem with it, so if anybody does, they just let me know and we'll, we'll talk it over.
So you're like, so I'm hearing you say you don't let them have flexibility, but, but the standard work week starts at 7, and they should be doing that unless there's an exception, it should be the exception, not the rule.
Right, right, right.
Okay.
And I don't know, I didn't realize this was happening until about a week and a half ago, and I don't know how far back it started, so, um, like I said, we'll, we'll work on that, plus get a new time clock, and that should help out Dougie trying to, uh, figure out the times and stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah, because with that time clock, it's leap year, now it shows them going in on a Tuesday instead of a Monday, and they're working on something.
I told you, I told you that clock was old.
Guess so. Could have been replaced a long time ago.
Oh, it should have been, yes, it should.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to get it replaced.
Okay. I'll second that.
Yeah, so we're, are we, we could do that, are we, are we all in favor with expending? Uh, what, Paul, what's the high end of what these things are gonna cost?
That's, the ones I've been looking at were been running like, uh, from 180 to 240, 250, but I'm not sure if they got a battery backup. Uh, it's probably not essential to have it, but it would help so we don't have to get in and reset it every time. I mean, if there's a power. But I'll, I'll do more checking, I got a friend of mine that, uh, works at Staples, and I may give him a call and, um, see if he can look things up.
Alright, and you'll, when you find out what it is that you'd like to get, you'll let us know.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, one more thing on the agenda.
Wait a second, I have a question on the hours. Um, they come in at a quarter to 7, and then they take a half hour break, but yet they put down that they don't have any lunch. So, what's the half hour break right off the bat in the morning? I don't think the hours add up.
Well, it's at their discretion where they want their break, and I know Charlie, years ago, when I took over, he said that they like to take their break in the morning when they have their coffee and muffin, and that's just the way it was worded from Charlie, and I said, "You're entitled to a half an hour, so where do you take it?"
It's a 15.
It's at your discretion.
It's a 15 minute break, uh, for the break, and then it's a half hour lunch.
Yep.
Yeah.
About a half hour in the morning and a half hour at lunch.
Well, I don't, we don't know if they take a half hour at lunch, that's, you know, it's kind of up to you.
They always write down no lunch on the time cards. So this is why I'm saying I don't think the hours add up. Isn't it supposed to be 15 minutes in the morning, a half hour lunch, and 15 in the afternoon?
No, no afternoon.
No, no afternoon. So that's 45 minutes. They're taking it out.
Yeah, and, and the thing about the lunch is that when they don't take the lunch, they leave early. So that's a wash, so really they shouldn't be taking a half hour in the morning, but I wasn't sure that they were, I thought they were just taking 15 minutes to go get coffee.
That's, I, well, I, I checked in with the time that they were spending up the whites without really getting into it. They come in, grab their coffee and go. Uh, so that's all, without me playing, uh, cop on them and following them around, which I refuse to do, I'm gonna leave it up to them to, uh, be honest and, and do it. I, I believe they have been pretty much. So I'm not gonna play cop on them, I'm, I'm going to assume that they go up, get their coffee, and, and come back at, at the right time and, and get to doing what they gotta do.
They get paid good, so they should be honest.
Right.
You know, if they're not, okay. Then we're overpaying them.
Yeah. Um, let me take a look at the, um, let me pull up the contract and just be sure. Um. Oh, yeah, come on, the computer, um. Hold on a second, I got more computers going here than I know what to do with, um. Wow. Hmm. Uh, here, let me just make sure that we're on sound footing in terms of that, because Steve, you raised the afternoon break, and it's worth looking at that. Um, just to make sure that we're all remembering correctly. There will be a 15 minute break in the morning and a 30 minute break for lunch, which will be optional at the employee's discretion. Uh, so there is, there is not an afternoon, we're correct with that. So, um, so I don't know, my thought is that it's worth having a discussion with them, Paul. I mean, um, it might be that it takes, you know, when I think about it, how long does it take to drive the whites, drive back and get your coffee, it might take longer than 15 minutes. Um, and if it is.
Two miles, two miles up and two miles back.
Yeah, so, but, you know, a few minutes to get in the truck, to get, yeah, I, I don't know. Um, I, I guess I'm just saying that, that it, what would be worthwhile doing is just going over with them the expectations that, that, you know, it's fine for there to be exceptions, but the rule is they pay time in at 7, not at 6:45. Um, that if there's going to be an exception, it's, you know, you're willing, but you'd like to know ahead of time if it's a holiday or if it's a work schedule thing. Um, and, uh, that they should just stay in communication with you so that you know. And that, uh, that they have 15 minutes in the morning, and would they please be careful to make sure that they're really not overdoing that 15 minutes when they go for their coffee? Does that sound like a, just a reasonable conversation to have with them?
Yeah, we went through, we went through this before with Charlie and them, because they were headed down to Abbott's, and then they spent most of the time down there passing gossip around, and they did stretch it out, so we kinda got it squared away. And like I said, I'm not gonna sit there and count the exact minutes for them to go down and come back. Uh, Brad may want to, and then he can take over and, uh, be the one to reprimand them, but I'm, you know, I'm, I'm just taking it at their word, they're gonna.
Yeah, but is it possible, is it possible that the reason they're clocking in, well, no, I guess not, I was gonna say, is it possible that they're clocking in early because they are leaving early to, um, to, to get their, you know, are they using 15 minutes of their own time, but then if they're clocking in, they're not? I don't know, I just would discuss it with them and, and tell them that there's gotta be some way that it's easily trackable, and would they work it out with you?
Yeah.
Sounds good to me.
They'll be reasonable.
Yeah, they should be.
Yeah.
They're nice, they're good to work with.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, Paul, did you have anything else?
I got one more thing, and I'm hoping nobody's got an objection, but, uh, I did order a battery operated, uh, chainsaw through Charlie. Uh, I bought one myself prior to that, just to try it out, and, uh, I think this is gonna work out pretty good for when they get called out, uh, especially if they just got limbs and stuff. And, uh, they can just throw it in a truck, they don't have to worry about starting it. Uh, Charlie did go over with, uh, Lori the day that I was in dropping off my weed eater up there, and he was explaining the thing about using, uh, mixed gas by the can before they store it. And Lori, um, Larry was not there because he was grading. So I think all we gotta do, I think it's better if Charlie explains it, because it definitely does work with the mixed gas. Because, uh, I know a few people that use it, it's expensive for a quart, but it saves hauling it in there and replacing a carburetor, and sitting there yanking on a saw that won't start, because, uh, once you get that stuff into the saw, any of the two cycles, uh, you can take them out six months later, prime it, pull it a couple times, and it's running. There's no, uh, tuning up and all the other problems they've had all these years. I had never paid much attention to the, I'd heard about this stuff, and until I talked to a few people about it, it's definitely, if you don't use your equipment steady, weed eaters, uh, chainsaws, any mixed gas stuff, this is well worth the money of, uh, putting that stuff in. But like Charlie said, if you're gonna be out cutting a log, truckload of logs up, then you can switch back. It don't do any harm, you can switch back to mixed gas. But before you put it away, dump it, and then put this stuff in, run it for a bit, and you put it away and it's fine.
It's money well spent.
Sounds like, sounds like nice. So, so that's what they're gonna do with the, the gas saws that we have, but we've also are adding a, um, electric saw to the toolkit, so that.
Yeah, battery, a battery operated, yes.
Yeah.
Cordless, basically.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That way.
And I know it works good, because I, yeah, mine works awesome, I tell you, it's kinda funny to go out there and all you do is put the switch on it and pull the trigger and you're, you're cutting. And it's got a 14 inch bar on it, and I cut up a few limbs and stuff around the house here, and I tell you, it's got all kinds of power, and it should last for cutting, I don't know, according to the videos I watched on YouTube, they'll cut anywhere from 30 to 40 limbs that are anywhere from four to five inches, that's hardwood. So, I mean, just for limbing up a tree or getting a limb out of the road or stuff like that, they just go down and grab the saw, don't have to worry about mixing gas, they don't have to worry about getting gas in the trucks around themselves, and, um, then they can, you know, on the bigger stuff, they can use the other saw.
Yeah. So, so for purchasing the saw, do we need to, um, uh, are, we need to be sure we're following all of our purchasing things, how much is the new saw?
Uh, mine, well, it's the same for everybody, I wanna see, I'll have to look at the invoice. I wanna say it was, uh, 2 something, 250, 275, I, I have to look on my invoice, but it's not, it's not that bad.
Yeah, well, I think, I'm trying to remember what, I don't remember off the top of my head what our policy is, but, um.
Well, I know we're supposed to go with, with, uh, getting three quotes and stuff, but when we're dealing with, um, stuff that has to be looked at, uh, I prefer to stay with somebody that's treated us good all these years and given us, you know, if I've known Charlie that if there's something broke, they town crew drop it out on their way working on the west side, and if he can fix it, they can pick it up on the way back, so to me, that's.
Well, and I think that we're, we're, we're in the range of where our policy allows us that discretion. You're not talking.
I just want board approval, I know I checked with Bovie and I checked with Lori, and they're both in agreement with it, and I just wanna get board's approval. Uh, the saws haven't come in yet, Charlie's expecting them in here within the next week. And, uh, I just wanna make sure I'm not the only one, you know, uh, saying that, you know, I wanna make sure the rest of the boards are in agreement with it.
Sure, how do, how do people feel, anybody wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion, I'm very much in agreement with it.
Great, anybody want a second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Great, Steve, second it, Brad, second it. Uh, any further discussion? Shall we get that electric chainsaw, or that battery powered chainsaw, all in favor? Uh, let's go through the, so sorry, I gotta go through the roots, so Doug?
Well, I shouldn't have no say, because I, I'm kinda related to Charlie, so I'm not saying nothing.
Oh, alright, so you're abstaining, that's okay. One abstain, Paul?
Yes, I agree, we should have it.
Yeah, Steve?
Uh, yep.
Brad?
Yes.
And Lynn, yes, great. Alright, super. Uh, Paul, did you have anything else, I thought you said two things.
Oh, that was it.
Okay. Alright, um, sort of still under the road stuff was a little bit of reviewing progress on our grant funded projects. Uh, maybe you could talk a little bit about what's happening on Parker Road?
Oh, oh yeah. We've been waiting three years on that baby. Yeah, I, I, I haven't, I haven't stopped up this week, but they were coming right along on it. Uh, they had the pile drove in and, uh, all the stuff were, you know, they're getting the stuff brought in, and, uh, I didn't actually ask them how long it was gonna take, but, um, I think it's a little bit too early with the weather and stuff, we're just thankful we got them here, and, but they, even in the three days when I went up, I was impressed with how much they had got done in the river and stuff, getting the water around where they're gonna put the, the different stuff, and, you know, they had everything lined up for hauling out of there and bringing stone and stuff in, so I will, I'm gonna make it a point this week, this coming week, to get over there and see how they're progressing.
Yeah. Good. Good, good, um, and then, uh, a couple of other things, thinking of our grant funded projects. Um, there's the Green Hill project that we, um, we have discovered, folks. When, when we met with Charlie and we reviewed the, um, Charlie Bush, when we reviewed all the grant funded projects, he had told us that the Green Hill project had, due date was, um, November 1. It turns out that that's June 1, um, so like 15 days from now. And it's not just Green Hill, it's Green Hill plus three other projects. One was, I think, Lily, help me if I remember these right, um, Paul, it's Lily Hill, um, Tiff Pond Road, and, uh.
Scottsville.
Yeah, was that, yeah, one other.
Yeah.
And, and.
And they, they've all, the Scottsville, the Tiff Pond Road, and the backside of Lily Hill have all been done. Uh, I'm not sure what the, you know, if anybody signed off on them, I assume they did, because they had, uh, they came and inspected them. The only one they had a problem with was Green Hill, which I was aware of last year, because Charlie told me. So I did check with, uh, Larry Bovie on that, just to see if Lori wasn't on board then, so. But Bovie said, yeah, they, they didn't have enough stone around a couple of the culverts. So I said to Larry, I said, "If we can't get an extension on this, how long daywise is it gonna take to get this fixed so we can get it approved?" And, and he said probably three to four days with just him and Lori. Lori hauling material, and he said just some of the stones had to be set back in, they didn't like the way the, they were set up against the culverts and stuff like that, so. He said they could get it done in, in three to four days if we can't get that extension.
Okay, so I had, um, been in email touch with Janice, because the extension would go through the portal, we believe, and she's been, she had been handling that with Charlie. Um, but I haven't heard from her, so I don't, I don't know if she's asked for the extension. At this point, I'm a little worried, I kinda think we have to plan on doing it, because by the time we ask, and by the time we get an answer, if they say no, it's gonna be too late to get it done.
Well, last, last I knew, they couldn't get ahold of Greg. Uh, Greg, when I talked to Collette last, uh. Uh, Greg, when I talked to Collette last, uh I think it was Monday or Tuesday, they still, Greg hadn't got back with them yet.
Right. And he hadn't gotten back to me and I'd been trying him since last Friday. So uh, so I guess I, I'm, I'm just thinking that maybe we need to reprioritize and just make sure that it gets done. Because the problem is if we put it off, we have other projects that are due on November first, including a, uh, the additional one of the Little Village Road by Margot's.
Yeah. We can, the, the reason I was holding, hoping to get the extension is because if Tommy decides to start mulligan on Timmer's Road, uh, he wants the, the ditching done, which has to be done first. And then uh what's left of the lemon down through there. So I was kind of holding off, but um, yeah, we can, we can go ahead and uh take that three or four days like Larry said and get that done right and um get it done next week.
I kind of think that's gonna be priority because I can't imagine, I can't imagine FEMA working so fast that they're gonna give us an answer before Ju- June first at this point. I mean, maybe I'm wrong, but I, I, you know, every time we've asked for an extension before, it's been a lengthy process. And with everything going on in the world right now, it just seems to me it'd be lengthier.
Well, I can talk with uh Lori and Larry tomorrow and have them get started on that on uh, on Monday. Because it really don't matter what the weather is. Because if they're just pulling rocks out, re- resetting them and Lori's hauling materials, uh, don't matter if it's raining or not, so.
Yeah.
I'll just have them get started on it on Monday and um and that'll be out of the way hopefully by the end of the week.
I think that sounds true.
Have you seen the um approval of the work that's been done so far?
What's that, Brad?
Uh, I heard something earlier in the conversation about um an inspection of the work and they said that um there were things that had to be done. So have you seen that inspection?
No, I, I haven't. Uh, I know they usually, once we get a project done, Charlie lets uh Greg, you know, because of his FEMA and stuff, he got in touch with them and I never heard anything back, so. I assumed that they all passed.
So I think it would be wise to apply for the extension just in case.
Oh, there's nothing wrong with doing that and going ahead. Yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah, that's actually a really good idea. And, and um Paul, I do think that um Janice can help you see the actual materials about what's required at each site so that you can kind of look at each and just double check to make sure that um everything was done.
Okay.
She should be able to pull that up through the portal. Um, maybe she.
They should have follow up on, because I, I was up there when they were doing, well, both the Timmer's Road and uh Scottsville Road there right by the Rockwell Place. That was culverts, uh, stone and everything. And like I said, I'm not sure how they do uh sign off on it, you know, so you can get your money. I don't know. If somebody, Greg has to.
Been done through the portal. I'd check in with Janice and have her look at that. And then, and then of course Greg is, is our source, so we'll have to keep trying him. But I think Brad's right. We should probably go and apply for the extension anyway because then it's just a good idea. It's a nice little bit of insurance. Yeah, all right.
You know what happens if a truck breaks or something. You just never know. So it's good insurance.
Yeah. No, I think, I think that's a good idea. Um, and if we don't need it, we don't need it. We should still go ahead and start it and get it done because we got a lot of other projects. Um, the other, the other one is this Little Village Road and um Paul, that's the one that they want us to get the stormwater permit in that you and I um are starting to work on. So, so we'll continue that. That's the area of folks down by um Margot's house that got washed out. Well, I think twice during Irene and then the next storm. Um, and USDA is paying for that. Um, so it's a grant and that will give us a November first deadline on that, I think. But they're also saying that um we can put in our stormwater application in a way that they might let us extend the deadline a, a little too. I, actually, I think that has to do with when you can play in the rivers and they might let us do it later than October one so that we could still get it done this year. And we're gonna put in the application for the longest period that we can.
Yep. Yep. Sounds good.
All right. Um, next up on our list was um Depot Street Drainage. Brad, you've been really taking the lead trying to do, well, Paul, you did with that ditch that Tommy did. But then there's the further problem that, and I think Tom, are you still on with us?
Yeah, yeah, I'm here.
There we go. And I know that that's a particular concern of Tom's. Um, so I don't, um, Brad, can you update us on what you've been researching?
Uh, well, I uh met with DOR because they have the drain cleaning equipment. And um I've, I've seen what happens in rain events where the broken pipe in front of Mark McClellan's house and in front of George's house where the water is boiling up and running into George's basement. And also Mark McClellan's basement, his mother's house. Um, so DOR suggests that they come up with their machine and suck all of the sand out of the catch basin by the Masonic Hall. And then what they'd like to do is open up the broken drain in front of George's house and put a snake down in each direction to see what the story is as far as other breaks. And um they gave an estimate. It can't be perfect because you never know what's going to happen. But it would be about fifteen hundred dollars for time and equipment. And they would also need our road crew with the water tank so that they could put water down the drain and see if it's actually going all the way through or not.
Yeah. Anybody thoughts about that? Does that seem like a good idea to people?
I'll make the motion that we don't.
Do I hear a second?
I second it.
Any further discussion?
Would it be good to have the fire department come with their tanker or water so they can really flush it?
Well, that's, that's the other thing. When Charlie was here uh flushing the culverts and stuff, he always had a deal worked out with Ken. As long as we kept fuel in the truck, we could use the pumper truck and flush out culverts and stuff. So now with Charlie being gone, uh, we're gonna have to figure if Ken will still let us.
Isn't, isn't Larry, isn't Larry on the fire department?
He used to be. I'm not sure if he still is.
Okay.
I'm sure Ken would go along with it though. Ken's a pretty, pretty reasonable guy.
Yeah.
I believe they put. DOR, DOR wasn't saying that they needed the pressure of the pumper truck, that they just needed, you know, our um, our plastic tank that they use to um.
I've had, I've had DOR do it before. They provide the pressure.
Right. They provide the pressure. They just need, um, they just need the big water, the um, you know, the big plastic tank.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Because if you need the pressure, then the fire, way to go.
Yeah. But DOR provides the pressure. They, they're, they put enormous amount of pressure in it. Comes from their truck, however they do it, yeah.
All right.
And I mean, that's, that's step number one. Then we know what happens, um, where it might be broken. And then we'd have to plan to um redo that clay tile drainage pipe.
Right, depending.
Because somewhere between George's house and the stop sign, it turns to metal. It's metal where it comes out by the stop sign. And they can't go up from that end because it's corrugated metal. So the snake would just spin around on the grooves in the metal.
And also from George's house east is Mount Tabor, so we're not gonna be spitting a bell for something that Mount Tabor's gotta be taking care of.
That's right. We'll do our end.
Okay, so it's our water that's coming off South Main Street. So what, we just let it back up into George's basement?
Well, it's Four Corners water coming down into the village and wiped out the house. We gonna sue Four Corners?
Right.
I'm not being sarcastic. I'm, I mean, yes, water runs downhill. But I mean, if the drain's broke, it's gonna be a, we're talking a probably grant money to get that all dug up down through there. And I mean, we'll pay our share, but Mount Tabor's gonna have to kick in and do their share.
That's right.
Well, so, so maybe we're getting the, you know, getting a little ahead of ourselves here. I, I do think that the idea, you know, for a long time, we've sort of said, what's going on there and we need diagnostics. And I think what, what DOR can do for us is do those diagnostics. And I think that's worth our dime to pay because we do have McClellans and Georges that are in Danby that are being impacted. And um, so I guess I, I, you know, I think we already had the uh motion on the table to approve it. And um I guess I'm just laying in that I would like to see us do the diagnostics. And then, then I think it, it might behoove a very serious conversation with the Mount Tabor Select Board. But uh let's cross that bridge when we get to it.
Yeah, because it might be just that it's plugged up and Davies is open, so. That's one way.
And, and then the other thing to keep in mind is that I'm not sure, Tom, that this is gonna help your issue. Um.
Yeah, no, but uh it's, it's a start, I mean.
Yeah.
Because there's still another, there's still another drain down by where Crosby's put in their uh, across the railroad tracks. Here, they uh put in uh that lumberyard down there for pressure treated and that blocked off another drain that's down there. So that's gonna be taken care of.
Right. And that is Mount Tabor's responsibility, not ours. And we've, we've spoken to them and, and I think, Tom, have you been in contact with them about that?
I, I haven't had a chance yet to uh contact them, but I, I will in the very near future, so.
Yeah, I think that that's important. And I, I, and Brad knows where that daylight's, right, Brad? You could show Tom, Joe.
Yes. And we also have two mystery drains. We have the box culvert that we don't know where it goes. And we're hoping for the state to come with their little, um, what do you call that, R2D2 thing?
Yeah.
And um, and we know that when we, um, when we had a water main repair, that there was a pipe down below the water main and nobody seems to know what that pipe is.
Mystery pipe. You know what? When, when DOR is here, the, the box culvert would be really easy for them to slide a snake down and tell us where it, it goes. You know, it's a wide open, I can crawl through that box.
Brad, that box culvert, is that the one at Davies parking lot?
No, 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 by the Sylwest Griffith Inn across from the triangle.
Oh, yeah. Okay. All right.
Goes right under the box.
Raymond Stevens thinks that it used to come out um just past George's house where that um there's a, like a, a railing there.
Yeah, that used to be an old, uh, like a, a bridge right, or not a really actual bridge, but there was water there, I guess.
But, you know, I've looked around there. I've poked around there and I don't see any kind of an opening. But, you know, the, the opening is very big by the triangle.
Yeah, it's like three, three, I can crawl in there easily. I mean.
Be careful what you volunteer for.
Yeah, no.
Lynn, I got a, I got a two hundred foot rope where you tie to your feet and it lets you crawl down in.
Yeah, I got a cow's zapper to keep her going.
Not my idea of fun, guys. Not my idea of fun. Well, how do we feel about with doors here anyway? Just having them snake that and finding out where that frickin' box culvert goes for once and for all?
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Let's do it because we can wait a long time on the state. We've been waiting since last October.
Right.
That's right. Yeah.
All right. So I.
I get a, no, I didn't understand the motion.
Um, I'm sorry, Chris, say again?
A detail on the motion that, I, I covered a lot of territory here. I just wanted to know. That's motion.
I'll make a motion if we get it done.
So Doug's making a motion that we engage Don DOR to um snake the pipes and do the diagnostics and we're adding in the box culvert as well. So it might cost a little more than the fifteen hundred because we're adding in the box culvert. Is that correct? Is that what you're making a motion for, Doug?
That's right.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
I second it.
Great. So Paul's seconding. Did you get that, Chris? Good. Um, all, uh, well, let's call the, call the, call the thing. Doug, yes?
Yes.
Uh, Steve?
Yes.
You skipped me, Lynn. Yes.
Paul?
I already told you, yes. You skipped it over me.
Right. So we got Doug, we got Steve, we got Paul. We're still missing Brad.
Yes.
And Lynn, yes.
He woke, he woke up.
All right.
Who's going to call DOR?
I suggest Brad does. Brad, Brad's gonna take the lead on this, right?
I'll, I'll, I'll do it if you wish.
Yeah, no, that'd be great. I'd love to be. I'd love to be there when they do it. Will you let us know?
Absolutely.
Because I'm not crawling through that thing, but I sure want to know where it's going.
Yeah.
I got a, I got a two hundred foot rope, Lynn, if you want to crawl.
Yeah. Yeah.
If I tie it to your feet, I know we can pull you back.
Yeah. I'm just afraid of what I find down there. Woof.
You're not scared of nothing.
Yeah, I'm, don't want to be grossed out. Well, we think it might be part, we think it might be part of what was the old sewer.
Yeah, could be.
Well, let's, let's do these diagnostics and see what we come up with. It'll be fascinating. And who knows, Tom, maybe it'll help give more information about what's going on in your property too. I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, it's a start, so thank you. I, I guess I'm gonna sign off though, but thank, thanks for your uh help on this, though.
All righty. Great.
Thank you, Tom.
Yeah.
Um, so um next, next up, we've got fleet permits. Um, let me see, I've got to switch. Janice had um sent a file for them. Let's see. Uh. All right, we've got a fleet for United Natural Foods. Uh, I don't think that was on our agenda, was it?
No.
Yeah, so they've added one, um, which is not uncommon. So I'll list them off and then we can vote on them all at once. How's that sound?
Good.
Sounds good.
All right. So we've got United Natural Foods, a small truck, one truck, eighty thousand. Um, hold on a second. Um. Next one is Hutch Crane. Uh, they've got four trucks, largest ninety-nine, eight. Um, and next one is uh Cardinal Logistics Management. Uh, I'm not sure if that's the same thing as CNR Hauling or not. Uh, so let's just say it's Cardinal Logistics. Um, and they have uh three trucks, largest eighty thousand, uh tractor, three axle. Um, um, then we've got uh CNR Hauling, um dump with four axle, sixty-nine thousand. Um Bissonette, Joseph Bissonette, um, three axles, sixty thousand, truck dump. Um, Browns Welding, uh, three trucks, all under eighty. Uh, and that's it.
I saw Charlie Bush on the list.
Who?
Charlie Bush, I saw on that.
That's CNR Hauling.
That's Charlie Bush?
Oh, okay.
CNR Hauling is Charlie, is that what you're saying?
That's it, CNR.
CNR Hauling LLC. It says owner Charles Bush. Yeah.
Yeah.
That's his truck. It's nineteen ninety-five international. Yeah?
Yeah, that's it.
Cool.
I make a motion. We accept them.
All right.
I'll second it.
All right. Did you get that, Chris? Cool. All right. Um, any further discussion? All in favor? Let's start with Doug.
Aye.
Um, Steve?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Brad?
Aye.
And Lynn, aye. All right. Um, let's see what's next on our agenda. Uh, oh, we've got appointing region transportation representatives. And I have to confess that I didn't know who currently was. And so Brad, you did a little research or maybe you knew offhand, right?
Yeah.
So currently, what is it? It's Tom Fuller and?
Zachary Fuller is the alternate.
Okay. Um, does anybody know if they want to continue or if they've been even able to attend the meetings? I thought last year that Tom said he really struggled.
He did say that.
It just, it doesn't work with his busy time of year and his schedule. Do you think we should maybe advertise and see if we can find any other citizens willing to do it?
Good idea.
We could put a notice out of Front Porch Forum and see if anybody's interested. Um, we could also just, we could rename them now and, and then, then have a discussion with them and, you know, see about it. I do remember Tom saying that if, I think I'm remembering him saying, it's really tough for his schedule. And if anybody else, you know, was interested, he would be happy to hand it over.
Right. During the summer, it's very tough for him.
Yeah.
I think, I think, Lynn, I think that's why you had Zach for a backup.
Right.
Maybe Zach would do it.
Well, should we go ahead and reappoint as is and then, then follow up with a discussion with them? Would somebody take it to do that? Would, uh, maybe, um, um, maybe Paul, you chat with Tom about?
Yeah, I'll talk with him about it.
All right. Anybody want to make the brave motion to appoint them even though they don't know they're being appointed?
I'll make a motion. I make a motion and then they can always resign if they don't want to do it.
Yeah, exactly. All right. So Brad made a motion.
Regional anxious to get the form filled out.
Yeah. So Brad's made a motion. Do I hear a second?
I second it.
Okay. Um, all in favor? Let's see. Doug?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Brad?
Aye.
Lynn, aye. Okay. All right. Um, next sort of business would be public comment, but I don't think we have any more public. Although, yeah. Any other comment or any other business to bring before, before we go into executive session?
Um, I have two questions. We haven't heard anything about the Brock loans in quite a few months.
Oh, yeah.
Anybody, has anybody heard anything?
I'll have to follow up with Tammy. I know that, that she had written those letters. Um, I'm not positive they were sent out, but I know the draft of the letter was there. I know that she had read away the books with Doug. Um, I'll have, I'll have to find out where it is. I'll put it on my to-do list, Brad.
Okay. And the other suggestion I had, since the people up there on Raymond Road and Staples Road are concerned about that corner, um, I was wondering if we couldn't just put up one of those, or actually two of them. One is you come up the hill from the bottom of Raymond Road as you're approaching the intersection. And then the other one as you're coming down the hill on Staples Road toward the intersection, the yellow signs that have the, and the, I, I forget exactly what they're called. It has the curved arrow and it says 35, it's suggested speed limit. It's not, it's not enforceable, but at least it would alert somebody that might not be familiar with the road. And they're only, um, I looked them up. They're, they're really quite inexpensive. Uh, what do we have here?
I don't think that's a bad idea though, but I, having talked to Haley.
What's that?
I talked to Haley, you know, at the farm right there, the old Maloo Farm.
Yeah.
And she's very worried about the fact that, that cars routinely speed by her house coming from both directions. Um, and she's worried because she has horses and livestock and people in the road. She feels it's really dangerous.
We have a choice of either those signs or we could have Equestrian Crossing and it shows a picture of a horse on it. Doesn't matter which ones you get, they're all $25.99. So that's fairly inexpensive. Of course, you do have the cost of the haul and you have the cost of our crew putting them up, which we haven't really made very good progress getting our other signs up yet.
Yeah, and I went down and looked at where that guy went off the road. The guy was drunk and he went right straight instead of making a turn, he went right down into the road.
The guy was drunk, it doesn't matter what speed.
Yeah, what you got on there, if you're drunk and you don't know, and just drive straight instead of making a turn, it don't matter if you got 15 miles, 25 miles down there or what.
Yeah, I went up and looked at it up there and I didn't realize he was drinking, but he looked like he had a little excess speed going around. And he came around that corner and went right straight down over the bank.
Yeah, he just went right straight.
And to me, that's just cluttering the roads up with more signs that people ain't gonna pay attention to. I, I, I talked with Haley, Haley Lynn?
Yeah.
I talked with her husband. And, uh, they're, you know, in agreement. I told them, once we get the traffic study done, that we'll be putting up 25 mile an hour speed limits at wherever each intersection comes in. One will be by their barn headed north and then one will be headed back down towards Route 7 down the road. But that's all we can do is put up 25 mile an hour signs. The people that are speeding, the signs mean nothing to them because we ran into that problem on Eden Street. I mean, idiot that's up the end of the road, he's still bad mouthing the people and refuses to abide by the speed limit. And Sheriff's Department's already visited him once and I suggest they go visit him again.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I don't want to see our roads all cluttered up with signs, but we gotta keep it legal. Wherever you come onto another section of the road, it's gotta be posted or else the sheriff can't issue a ticket.
Well, it sounds like you're gonna sign one way or another. And this is why you could have.
We'll be putting up a 25 mile an hour speed limit. Once you come off the Staples Road and turn down towards Abbott Farm. And then there'll be one down by the haunted house coming up through. And then there'll be one headed up Staples Road from the Raymond Farm. And there'll be one headed down, uh, towards Scottsville by their farm. And I did talk to them about, they were concerned about, they just want, you know, with the horses and stuff. So when I talked to Captain Fox of the Sheriff's Department, he, he was gonna check into the signs and he said he thinks them signs have to be purchased by, or they don't have to be purchased by the town. Um, they can be purchased by the owner or the landowner themselves as long as they abide by the 25 foot from the center of the highway. And they, and they said that they would try to find some signs and check with us before they put them in place. Like, you know, pedestrians or horses back riding, stuff like that, so.
Yeah, the challenge I see with us doing the signs is if we're going to do them there, we have to be prepared to do them when anybody asks. Um, and, and that's okay if we're prepared to do it. Um, but, um, I guess in my mind, I'm thinking that, um, you know, just, just like any other road that we've done a traffic study on and determined a speed limit so that it could be enforceable, um, it, it might make sense. Because right now, with no speed limit there, that speed limit's 50. And, and that's an incredibly dangerous place. And I know that the accident, I, I agree, everything I heard about the accident, this was not related to the chronic problems that she's having with this people speeding by there. But people do speed by there and she has complained about it. And so I think it's worth putting it on the rotation to get a traffic study done.
Yeah, it is. They, uh, Dave Fox didn't know when, because the guy that, the head of the speed car, he wasn't sure with everything that was going on. It isn't out yet, but he said he would give it to him and we'd be put on the list. So he was gonna notify me when, what they usually do is ask where they want it. So they usually give me a call first. And then they place it on the road for, they have a certain amount of time it has to go. And then they check the amount of traffic, what the traffic is, what the average speed is, and the time of day. And this is something that never made sense to me is even if they say that average speed's 30, we can still post it at 25. So legality, we've got to have the traffic survey done no matter what. So we have to wait for them. We look how long we had to wait for them to haul the hill. I mean, they never, we waited probably six or seven months before they could get up there last fall to do it, so.
I think it's a good idea. I used to live on that road and, and I do know that she's right about the excessive speeds that people travel on that road.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, long time ago, but I did live there. Um, so.
It is on, it is on the list.
Say again?
I said it is on the list. As soon as they, uh, get us, get a room for us in there, they're gonna do the survey up there.
Right. Okay. So will you keep us posted as to when we think it's gonna happen?
Yep. Yep, I will. I'll, if I don't hear nothing by first of June, I'll call Dave again and see how we're coming on, uh, getting a cart down there.
All right. Sounds good. Um, anything else before we go into executive session?
Nope. I guess that's it.
So Bob, I have a question for you. Um, the, the Select Board has to go into executive session, but how does that work with you hosting the meeting?
So I'll just leave. I'll go upstairs and you guys finish up and I'll come down 40 minutes later and hopefully you'll all be hung up.
All right. And, and yeah, that's fine. And I suspect that our conversation won't take more than 10 minutes.
Okay. So I'll, I'll leave and put me on mute and.
There you go. Bye. And Chris, we gotta say goodbye.
You want a motion?
Uh, yeah, we need a motion to go into executive session.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?